Okay, it is six thirty. We're gonna call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. First up, we have an acknowledgement and presentation. I'd like to recognize Ms. Glenda Olivier-Dispatch for your exceptional service to the city of Castle Hills from two thousand seven to two thousand twenty-two. Fifteen years is no small feat, especially in the city of Castle Hills and having seen firsthand how everybody works together at dispatch and how that's kind of the heartbeat of the city of Castle Hills. I'd like to personally thank you, Glenda, for your service. Chief, did you have any comments?
Counsel, mayor. So this is basically directed more towards Glenda. Glenda, I can almost remember the first time when I first started here with this department. Over time, you kind of learn, over time, you kind of learn how to read folks and learn about their character. When I met you, I thought, I thought, what a sweet lady. And I mean that literally. Over the years, you have contributed to my expanded girth around my waist, not complaining because those sweets have been really good. Don't ever feel that you can't drop off any of those homemade cookies. Remember, you're retiring from dispatch and not from baking cookies. Glenda, it has been a pleasure working alongside with you, hearing your voice on the other side of that radio transmission or the phone. Congratulations on your retirement and taking the next step in your life, turning the page and starting the next chapter. You have many, many steps and chapters to go, and you've proven that because you're Glenda and you're a fighter and a survivor.
We have a little something for you for all of your service to the city of Castle Hills. Close.
Thank y'all very much. It's been a privilege to be here. I'm sorry, it's only fifteen years. But I've loved every minute. I've loved my job. So thank y'all very much.
Ms. Tedford, do we have anybody signed up for citizens? Okay, we will go straight into the consent agenda. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Joyce?
Yep.
On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel, and thank you for approving us to proceed to get bids for the next round of street construction. We're moving along. First item, a new business, public hearing on the application submitted by John Connell, Seven Shady Cove, CB five seven seven eight B Block ten Lot forty-five for the proposed removal of five oak trees and four other non-oak trees for the construction of a new residential structure. It is six thirty-five, and we will open the public hearing. If nobody signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing at six thirty-five. Six point two, discussion and possible action on applications submitted by John Connell, Seven Shady Cove, CB five seven seven eight B Block ten Lot forty-five for the proposed removal of five oak trees and four other non-oak trees for the construction of a new residential structure. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, mayor. The Architecture Review Committee reviewed this application, and I think it was, it was last Wednesday night on the fifth, and I believe it was a unanimous motion to approve the application and recommended approval to city council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Architect Review Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Any discussion?
Question? Mr. Rappley, were there any citizens who commented at the meeting in opposition to this?
Let me check with, was Ms. Tedford or Mr. Zamron? Louie, was there anybody there in opposition?
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty-two oh one dash eleven amending the city fee schedule to increase the base fee for residential garbage collection effective February first, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, mayor. Counsel, this is the proposed ordinance in front of you for review and adoption. This is a part of the adopted budget FY twenty-two, which programmed in the dollar fifty increase, bringing us additional revenue of about thirty thousand to the general revenue, general fund revenue to sustain and sort of balance our revenue and expenditures in the sanitation fund. Also, this includes, and let me step back. I know we had two budget years of discussing this, and first was the proposal of two dollars about two years ago, and we phased in fifty cents, and this year, in this budget, we included a dollar fifty, bringing to a total of twenty-seven dollars. This will also include, as we've continued to have roll-offs at City Hall, so we'll have those on a quarterly basis this year for brush collection, and then we're also working to have at least one or maybe two bulk collections for citizens this year as part of this rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve ordinance number two zero two-two dash zero one dash one-one, amending the city fee schedule for the base fee for residential garbage collection.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mayor, counsel, real quick, what we'll be doing is sending out postcards notifying residents of the increase and then working with SAWs, and we're looking at a timeframe of effective March first, just like we did last year with the fifty cent increase.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on waiving the prohibition against sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages within three hundred feet of a church or a public school during Fiesta Castle Hills event on April second, two thousand twenty-two.
Mayor, excuse me, he went over six point four.
I'm sorry, I got excited. We'll go back. Discussion of possible action on the continuation of the city of Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Office. I would like to add that I did send somebody by for a passport today, and they texted me and said it was the best passport experience that they ever had. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, mayor. I thought you were gonna thank me, then I would tell her you that Ms. Davis processed the passport, so. At that point, mayor, what, what counsel has asked since we implemented this passport service over the last, I believe, three years, we didn't bring it forward last year because we kind of really had to suspend activities for the most part because of COVID. And as a whole, I provided as your backup numbers, but aggregately, over the three years, including suspension of the office due to COVID, we've processed over two thousand passports. Ranging revenue is about sixty-five thousand minus some of the postage fees on an annual basis, but for the most part, it's been profitable. We have two employees right now who are processing passports a part of their daily duties, and I think that we're only continuing to strengthen this particular service as we move past the pandemic, hopefully. I think we'll be able to expand this service. We are the only one in this area suburban city that does this. So again, it's, it's an increased revenue to the general fund, obviously helps pay for portions of, of employee salaries, but it's another service that the city of Castle Hills provides, and so if counsel would like to, as I've mentioned here in a recommendation, we can review this again this time next year, see how two thousand twenty-one works out as the passport services. We, in the adopted budget revenue, we are expecting thirty-five thousand. We were just under, a little bit under thirty thousand last year in two thousand twenty-one, and that's starting again in March of twenty-one through December. So we saw an uptick in passports as things started opening up mid-two thousand twenty-one. But I'd hate to say that anybody asked me in the surrounding cities and other city managers, I tell them the service is not working out well because I want to make sure that we continue to do it in this area because we've been told it's faster than going to the post office and a lot of times going downtown and waiting hours to get your passport processed. So, any questions I have, specifically Ms. Davis can answer them technically and processing the passport, but I'll open it up to counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Rappley. Counsel, do we have a motion? Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, counsel, I'd move that we approve the continuation of the city of Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Facility.
Second.
The second by Mr. May. Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Six point five, discussion and possible action on waiving the prohibition against sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages within three hundred feet of a church or a public school during the Fiesta Castle Hills event on April second, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Isbrand?
I know you're excited about this one, mayor. This is our routine action that we take to lift the prohibition, given the distance from the school during Fiesta.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a motion?
I guess I would make a motion that we, that we waive the prohibition.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty-two dash oh one dash eleven dash A of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, amending section forty-eight point five seven A of the Code of Ordinances to require applications for tree removal to include photographs of trees to be removed showing tags. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, mayor and counsel. This is a, something that came out of the discussion that wasn't actually on the agenda at last week's Architecture Review Committee. It's something that was requested, I think, by the committee to have an additional step as part of the application process. So at the time, Mr. Zamron took the initiative with Mr. Schnall to introduce language to help further use this applicable to the, to the applications to help with the architectural review process when they're reviewing applications, specifically when they're inventorying trees to have the photographs associated with them.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel? Mr. Joyce?
I move that we accept ordinance number two zero two-two dash zero one dash one-one dash A, amending section forty-eight point five seven of the Code of Ordinances to reply applications for tree removal to include photographs of trees to remove showing tags.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Mr. Paul, thank you. Do we have a discussion? Uh, Mr. Joyce, yes, sir.
I just want to point out that I think this makes a lot of sense because I went out to that site of the home that we considered a few items ago to try to figure out which were the trees taken down. It was pretty tough. If they were tagged and, you know, flagged more readily, I think it would have been easier to make that decision. So anyway, I think this makes sense.
Agreed. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. And next up, we have discussion on a proposal for the Lofts at Castle Hills, including presentation by VaCaro Multi-Family Inc. and discussion of a proposed public facility corporation structure. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, mayor, counsel. At this time, we have, I think, Mr. Bremer's here and staff to talk about the, the project further. Ms. Fernandez is also here from Bracewell to discuss the tentative timeline, and I believe, is Mr. Plummer? Mr. Plummer is here to talk about the, the structure related to the fiscal side of the project. I think Mr. Paul had brought that up at one point. So there's a number of things related to the project to discuss. I think specifically, we wanted to talk about the tentative timeline associated with it. I've spoken to Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Plummer about how we incorporate some public sort of town hall workshop meetings with the residents and sometime in April before proceeding with the PFC steps. So I believe they're inclined to moving forward with that timeline as well. But I have a copy up there provided to you as a tentative timeline, which obviously we can change, as you'd say, on the fly during the meeting if necessary, based on counsel's wishes as part of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do you have a presentation you're gonna pull up or? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jared Thieris. Senior Vice President of VaCaro Ventures. We're a multi-family developer based in Fort Worth, but I work for the Multi-Family Division, which is based here in San Antonio. We have control over a site that's bounded by Winston, Lock Hill, and Northwest Military. It's approximately five acres that we're proposing a four-story, approximately three hundred unit, multi-family, Class A-plus apartment community, multi-family community. So here's Winston. Military is down there, and then Lock Hill is up here. There's a car wash that's right here, and there's some office condos that are, you know, on this side, I guess, just south of this site right there. We're proposing the entrance. It's kind of hard to see, but the egress ingress would be off of North Winston right here. Vehicles could come in or out, either go left to Military or right to Lock Hill. There's a secondary access back here that's only for fire access. You cannot, a resident could not enter the garage. So it's only for back of house, so we're really just trash, and then, and then, of course, fire safety. It's a single courtyard. The pool's in the middle right there. We've got our amenities in the, in the green area over here. The garage, approximately four and a half floors, is in the middle. It's, it's considered a wrap, so you will not be able to see the garage from the street. It'll all be surrounded by the residences. So it'll be completely screened as well. All, again, all the, the amenities are up here. And let me move to the rendering. It might be a little bit easier. This is conceptual, but hopefully this will give everybody an idea, kind of the quality that, that we're pursuing here. Let me just hold it up.
Jared, what you're showing reflects the counsel that's in the standout here?
That's correct. Yes, this is, I'm sorry. Discussed previously. So this, this is a, this is a rendering. We're stating the perspective that we are at right now. It's kind of the corner of Military and Winston right now, kind of looking, I guess, southwest. Four stories. Here's the amenities that I was mentioning in the site plan right here, the leasing office. You know, the units, you cannot see the garage. It'll be wrapped. We'll have some nice decorative lighting for, you know, temporarily. We're going to Los Angeles Castle Hills. So be contemporary projects, similar to a couple that, you know, that are under construction in Alma Heights or something that you see at, at, at La Quintera, the Med Center, Stone Oak, or South Towne Pearl. So, you know, a handful of brick, some stucco, maybe some wood accents here and there to kind of soften it up a little bit. You know, we're proposing ten-foot ceiling heights, which is very good for, for multi-family projects. We'll have kind of a lawn area, which I didn't point out on the site plan, but, you know, there's an easement right there, so maybe we'll have some best-in-living, some hardscaping, some landscaping, some benches, some bike racks. There currently is not a sidewalk right now, nor lighting on, on Winston right now, on this side of Military. Very dark at night, feels like an alley. So, you know, we'll have a lot of on-street decorative lighting, and of course, you'll get a lot of ambient lighting from, from the units as well on the boughs and stuff like that. And also, there's not a sidewalk on the military side as well, so. So we would add that same thing with lighting, so it would bring a lot of much-needed lights to this, to this section of Winston over here. Let me grab a rendering of the kitchen and bathroom real quick. As you can see on, on here. Kitchen rendering, very contemporary, you know, still conceptual, but, you know, gloss white cabinets in this rendering. Some nice glass backhanded subway tile, stainless steel appliances, some clean white quartz countertops. You know, indoor water ice dispenser. We'll have solar window shades, which are very nice, especially for multi-family. Again, this is Class A-plus. So this, you know, kind of gives you an idea. We'll have decorative lighting, decorative hardware. Let me grab the bathroom real quick. So, similar on here, very contemporary, you know, frameless shower enclosures, lots of glass. This is a little bit different. It might be hard to see, but a little bit different of a, of a cabinet scheme here. So, you know, we usually like to do two alternate schemes. So, you know, this very conceptual, but this is a little bit darker, some kind of quartz countertops. You know, chrome hardware fixtures. You know, some nice wood flooring, some pane lights, decorative lights, you know, framed mirrors. This, this kind of gives you an idea of what we're proposing. As far as the amenities, let me put the site plan up real quick. As far as the amenities, we're proposing a golf simulator, a dog run and dog washroom. So this green area, the hatch green area, sorry. The hatch green area is, is the amenity areas right in there. So it hasn't been completely defined yet, but, you know, we'll have, of course, you know, a, a club room, a fitness center with a yoga, Pilates, spin room, a dog washroom, and the dog washroom's gonna be conditioned. So somewhere in the building, it hasn't been defined, but it's gonna be really, really nice, almost like what you'd see at a dog wash spa or Lucy's or something like that, where residents can also have, you know, mobile dog washer groomers come in and service their dogs in the dog washroom. So greater than any right there, we'll have private cabanas that the residents can run out at the pool. They'll have misters, fans, televisions. So maybe we'll do four or six. That's typically what we'll do, you know, somewhere in here. There'll be a club room, a billiards room as well, and there's kind of in this area. The leasing office will probably be right here at this corner. You know, we're considering Northwest, I'm sorry, Winston and Military is kind of our front, the main front door right there, so that's kind of maximum exposure for us. The leasing office, prospective residents, and again, residents will come in here into this garage. That's the entrance right there. So, you know, it's kind of halfway on the block on Winston, right there between, between Lock Hill and Military. And I think that's it. Here's the, the dog walk, you know, the dog park that we're proposing is back here. Dog washroom, again, will be some, somewhere inside the building. We'll have bike, a bike shop, bike storage rooms, closets that residents can run out if they need additional storage. We're proposing both recessed and cantilevered balconies, trying to get as much glazing as we can on the first floor. Rendering back up, maybe a little bit hard to see. So, you know, we want it to look, you know, very contemporary. So, you know, our plan, the intent is to put a little, as much glass and glazing as we can on this ground floor right here. We're also proposing actually twelve-foot ceilings on the ground floor, which would be very, very nice. And it's partly for, there's a lot of topography that starts up here, and then it kind of slopes down here. So it, you know, the ground floor units, this section will at a minimum have twelve-foot ceilings. This might drop a pin around the garage. If we can do eleven or twelve, we will, but for sure, this section around the clubhouse will need to have twelve just because of the topography that we have down there. And I think, I think that's it. Actually, let me show you the club room real quick. Got that. Club room. Again, it's conceptual, but it gives you an idea. We're proposing a two-story height, so, you know, resident walks in. You know, it's a great feel, great curb appeal. You'll be able to see it from, you know, all the windows outside. It'll overlook the pool courtyard that you can kind of see. It might be a little bit hard, but you can kind of see through, through that window right there. You know, leasing offices will be tucked to the side. You know, a fitness center we'll have as well, kind of back in there. We will also have a conference center. I meant, I forgot to mention that. Very important with COVID, the advent of it. A lot of more people are working from home. So, you know, we'll have the traditional conference center, but we'll also have, you know, maybe two or three micro conference centers because we do expect a handful of residents to work from home. So, you know, that's become very popular, the micro conference centers. But anyways, this is just, just giving you an idea of, of the quality that, that we're proposing here. So, again, it won't end like this, but it should be very similar to something, something similar to the bathroom and the kitchen and the club room that we're proposing.
No, I, I think we're good, and I would turn it over to Mr. Plummer to talk about the numbers that he's provided. Yes, they all have copies. And then I believe after Mr. Plummer is done, between Mr. Plummer and Ms. Fernandez, we can talk about how we better fill out the timeline of the project because right now it's tentative, which again may include incorporating the two public information workshops in February for residents to attend. Kind of similar setting like this right here. Thank you.
All right, councilman. We, we've been through the structure several times. I'm not gonna go back through that, but we were asked to try and work with the developers to do a comparison of what would happen if a, if you don't do this project, another project comes along and it pays taxes. And how does that compare to what you would get out of this project? And so when Ryan can, I'm gonna ask him to pull up on the screen the one-page outline that we have. What we did was we took and assumed that for purposes of this exercise, that for the next ten years, if you don't do this project, there would be nothing developed there. And, and I'll talk in a minute about what happens if that's only five years. Then we applied the taxes, assuming that the building was built. And that would be a eight-year start, ten-year completion, start paying taxes then. And you can see the total taxes, and the next column over, what you will see is the city's taxes. And so effectively, what that means is, is that right now the city's collecting six thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars from the property. Assuming that a sixty-million-dollar building goes on the site, your share would be four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, beginning in year ten. If you take that out for a seventy-five-year period, and we grew it at a one percent value for seventy-five years, and then applied the same tax rate to it. Now, we chose a one percent value, not because that's going to be the value. That's not a realistic expectation of growth and value. But it's going to give you the proportion because in this transactions, when you go to the next column, you're gonna get a, basically a twenty-five thousand dollar a year administrative fee. And then the next column, you're gonna get twenty-five percent of the taxed saving. And then the next column, you're going to get 25% of the taxed savings on this project. So that number is nothing more than 25% of the first column. You will see that there are blanks for the first 20 years. The reason for that is that they will not pay you if they do not have the cash flow to pay you um, over their preferred return. But the amount accrues. And so what you will see in this column is, is that there is a five-year period. And then you will see a number of 1,445,000. That is upon a sale of the project, they have to pay you all of the back taxes on the project. In the next column over, you will see your 25% of the net sale proceeds. That number is 5,128. The final column is the total that the city would get out of the project on an annual basis. So then we just, we took a net present value of a 75-year stream, discounted it at 5% and compared them. If you compare the tax stream the city would get, the net present value would be 6,935,000. The amount that the city would actually receive from this project would be 18,693,000. So approximately three times what you would have gotten if you don't do this transaction, but another building of the same type goes in place within 10 years. The, we can change the growth factors. And it won't change the numbers materially because your share of the taxes will grow along with what the taxes would have been on that building. So that's why we used a 1% number. Then you're getting 25% of every sale of this building. So the question is, how often do buildings sell? Well, buildings generally sell between five and 10 years. We chose 14 years, just to make it five sales over the time period. Um, so you will see in the second to the right column, what happens when the building sells every 14 years and how much the city makes. If in fact the building sells every five years, that number doubles. And so we're not trying to predict for you how much money you would make out of this transaction because we can't. Um, it, it, our crystal ball is not that good. But what we did try to show you is the proportionality of what would you would make if you do this deal versus what you would make if it naturally developed. And you can pretty quickly analyze this and determine, well, if it developed in five years, um, then the city would get almost $2 million more of taxes. And so then the number would be eight million something. And that would compare still to the, to the, is it 17 or 18 million? 18 million that you would get out of this transaction. The other thing we did in this calculation to be conservative, um, right now the numbers are being run at a 5.25 cap rate. The actual market cap rate is probably 450. And, and cap rate takes the net operating income. And if you take the net operating income and you divide it by the cap rate, that is the sales price of a building in today's market. So at a 450 cap rate, that building is worth much more than what our numbers show, but we're using 525. Then every 14 years when we did a sale, we added 75 basis points to the cap rate. And that's just to be conservative. We have no idea what the cap rate will be 50 years from now. But the maximum cap rate on this chart is 9%. And that is an extremely high cap rate. So we felt like our numbers were fairly conservative. Um, and, and once again, I want to be real clear. We're not trying to tell you, this is what you're going to get from this project. You may get more, you may get less, depending on how often it sells, depending on its value. Um, but this was the developer's best guess at a reasonable approximation. And probably the most important thing to me from this chart is that you can take the second column from the left, 6 million, uh, I think it's 935, and you can pick, compare that to the tax savings share of 9,200,000. That 9,200,000 is annual rent. This building never sells ever. You still get that rent. And so we've tried to build a formula for you that assures you that you're going to get the same amount in taxes, whether this building is taxable or tax exempt. Our hope, our belief is that with the sales portion of this transaction, you're going to come out way ahead of what you would have gotten if the property was subject to tax. That, that's what we tried to achieve in these deals. So, any questions? And, and, and by the way, gentlemen, obviously you just got this, you know, feel free to, to call and ask additional questions. Um, and, and we can, of course, discuss this at any time, but, um, this was our estimate of how to compare the tax rates to the income from this project.
First off, Mr. Plumber, thank you so much for that. Um, I did want to thank you again for supporting us and our approach, as I've said, as a radical transparency. This is something a little bit different for Castle Hills. So we're going to do everything we can to dissect it and ensure that uh, our colleagues know and the residents know so that there's no stone unturned. Mr. May, I think you have a question?
I did. Uh, Mr. Plumber, just for the benefit of those present, could you give the range of anticipated rent uh, for the units that are in play here and then the variety of options for those who would want to rent in this project?
Oh, Mr. May, I don't know those off the top of my head, but I will tell you that the current projections of rent for an efficiency unit start at $1,100. They're, they're currently in the pro forma is no unit at less than that. Um, the market analysis would seem to say that that is undermarket. Um, because the pro forma is very conservative. So I predict that the opening rents will actually be a little higher than that. Um, and I don't know if y'all have got numbers handy to be able to give them the rental structure?
That's right. It's, it's
I believe it's in the handout there, Councilman, on the right there, the highlights. Is that the revised one?
Um, what's the first?
1100.
This is the underwritten. Um, 1100 for a one-bedroom with 550 square feet, a one-bedroom with 620 square feet is 1,185. I'm going to skip down to two bedrooms, 1,000 square feet, 1,585. Three bedrooms, $2,100. And, and I'm, uh, will predict that they will actually be higher than that. Um, because those are underwritten and I, I know that market analysis, uh, I know is, that's run at a uh, a dollar 71 per square foot and the market analysis is a dollar 75. So.
Mr. Paul?
Go to line 11.
Okay.
And tell me what the 478, 239 is.
That is the city's share calculated at 21% of the overall taxes. So in line 11, uh, the concept is, is that in year eight, a building is begun, it's built in years nine and 10. In year 11, it's put in service. In year 11, it would pay a total tax rate of 2,277,000. Of that, the city's current portion of the total taxes is 21%. So you would, as a city, collect that 478 off of that building.
See, the reason I'm asking this is because my notes tell me something different than previous discussion. And so obviously, uh, the previous discussion, as I wrote and understand it, was the, uh, project was estimated roughly 6 million, $60 million. Based on $60 million, the number of 1.2, 1.3 total taxes, uh, school district, all the taxes, not Castle Hills, but all the taxes. And that under the project that being presented, we would get 25% of that. Now, that being said, if it was just build the suit and it wasn't under this program, the total taxes for the city would be somewhere in the range, just the city taxes, we wouldn't be getting the 25% would be about $30,000 a year. So that's why I'm trying to draw the inferences here. Where did, where did I mess up?
Y- y- your notes are wrong.
I'm not wrong, you said?
Your notes are wrong.
Okay.
You have a $60 million building on the current city tax rolls. You would be collecting approximately 400 to 450,000 dollars off of that building.
Okay.
The $30,000 number is your share on the vacant land as it sits today.
Well, actually it's a lot less than that.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, actually the numbers here show.
It's approximately 7, $7,000 total.
Yeah, you're right. The numbers here.
I got something right.
So, um, what, what I told them to do.
But am I wrong? Didn't we have that discussion about the, the 100? Again, I'm not, I'm not complaining, just trying to understand. And I put forth a couple of things to people and I want to make sure I'm right. And I've put out wrong information under the actual tax aspect. Now the city still wins dollar-wise, if we go to this project, I'm not condemning that, but I'm just trying to make sure, because I think I remember you even saying that it would bring to city at least 10 times more under this project in savings of taxes over this project. And that matched up pretty much with the discussion I thought I heard on the $30,000 a year. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I think the $30,000 may have been comparing the administrative fee that you get versus today's vacant land. I, I'm not exactly sure where those numbers came from.
Current, currently, but the city of Castle Hills, on the analysis that I heard, the city of Castle Hills taxes on a $6 million project would be approximately $30,000, just on that. If not with you all, I'm talking about somebody walked in and built it as a development on their own. Now, a figure, way to figure that is what, 2.5, uh, 2.7 or something like that, times 60 million, what does that come up to, Ryan?
Mr. Paul, it's, it's about 300,000, uh, because it'd be 1.2 total. So I think it's about 330, 340,000?
I think that's right.
312.
Thank you.
Okay. So somewhere or another, uh, then I need to revamp my article.
And I apologize. I obviously confused you. And, and part of the reason we did this and make it, made it open is so that people can see what the projections actually are in numbers.
So now the, the, the city would possibly, uh, get roughly three times more under this project as opposed to 10 times. And that's where the big difference is as far as the information that I put out. The gentleman has okay.
So I think I was looking at, uh, if you're earning $7,000 a year.
Right.
Versus what you'd be getting under this scenario.
Correct.
Is roughly 10 times in, in our, in, in our, uh, uh,
Which could be more than that, but based on seven.
You assume you got 6 million bucks. I think that's, it'll be, actually, that's 100x, isn't it? Yeah. So I, somehow I, I think I, uh, uh,
I did hear right though. That's why I'm getting that. And, yeah, okay, okay.
But I think, I think the information you got was, was bad.
Well, in what I wrote, I did put information as of December 17th, so we're past that. We're getting more information.
Yeah. So, you know, this, this was a, this was a very, you know, sober analyst, you know, uh, analysis of, of, um, so that's why we're presenting it in this fashion.
All right. I appreciate you saying that then. I, I was, I was concerned about my memory fading on me.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mr. Plumber, I don't know if you can answer this question for me. So I don't know if I'm being fair in asking, first of all. But I pick up the newspaper every so often. Actually, I look at it online because no one picks it up anymore. And I read about all the luxury apartments, the luxury construction taking place in Alamo Heights. Alamo Heights is going to be the place of luxury housing. And what we've been presented is the opportunity for quote affordable housing or workforce housing. And I'm trying to understand why Alamo Heights could have luxury apartments that I'm not aware that they're being asked to give a 75-year, 75-year tax break to. But we are being asked to give a 75-year tax break for affordable housing. And honestly, I would say I would like to be known as a city that has luxury housing, not affordable housing. Can you help me understand what the difference is here?
I can. You are giving a tax break so that a luxury housing complex can be built in your community. In order to give that tax break, you must have 50% of the units at 80% of median income. What you are getting is luxury housing. That's, that's really one of the benefits of this program. But in order to get the luxury housing, you do have to have an affordable component and they have to live with the affordable component. And so that is where the, the disconnect is. You could, and I'm going to, I'm going to repeat what I believe and what I think the developers will be happy to come up and explain to you in more detail. You could not build this luxury housing based upon the rents that are currently in this marketplace that they can get comps on. So the reason that they have come to you is for the tax exemption because there are not comparable rents that will support a high enough per square foot rent in your community. But by having the tax exemption in place, they can underwrite this at a dollar 71 rents on average. And they can build a luxury complex. And so this is a way to bring a luxury complex to your community. And the reason you keep hearing there's an affordable component is because the only way they can get the tax exemption is to provide units at 50% of 80% of median income. Now hopefully that answers your question. If it doesn't answer your question, I'll let the developers take a stab.
It helps me to understand it and I appreciate it. And I think that it's worth the public understanding this too. So how is it then that a developer though in Alamo Heights can afford to do this? And say that it can put people in those apartments, but if you come to Castle Hills, this development can't do that. What's the difference?
I'm going to ask the developers to really answer that because they understand the square foot values better. So you'd probably be able to get $500 or $600 a unit more.
Mr. Bremer, can we get you a slide with the mic? It doesn't pick up very far.
Okay, thank you. Um, you'd probably be able to get $5, $600, $700 a month more per unit in Alamo Heights than you can currently in Castle Hills. And that's really the delta. So you have a fixed, you have the same cost to build in Alamo Heights as you do in Castle Hills. But your aggregate rent that you can charge and your, your, your price per square foot is just simply more uh, in, in Alamo Heights than you can get here. That's, uh, that you can demonstrate that there's history. So, um, that may change over time. Now, uh, Castle Hills may completely change the, um, you know, the, 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 the high watermark for, for what we all thought we could get here. But currently as it sits right now, you can just derive more rent in Alamo Heights than you can here.
So I'd, I'd be curious to understand what the basis of that is, because what I think I hear you saying is we built exactly the same thing in because what I think I hear you saying is we built exactly the same thing in Alamo Heights that you built here. They can get more for their rent and don't need a seventy-five year tax abatement than we could get for rent. What, what is that based on?
Uh, uh, market comps. So there, there are no, um, actual market comps that show. I, I feel like we're stretching where we are, uh, what we're performing here. Um, you know, based on what's, uh, what's available in the market. So we're having to go out to the rim into Castle or, or in Alamo Heights to, uh, to justify the rents that we think we can get here, because there's just no comp for it. Um, we, we feel like we're, um, uh, delivering something that, that this market hasn't, uh, uh, had. And, um, so we're, 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 we're really pioneering what, uh, um, uh, what can be done here. And, and my suspicion is, although I can't prove it until we build something, but I think this community, because of its location, it's, 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 you know, it's central to the entire county. I think, I think we're going to exceed what we're, what we're projecting. But nobody will really buy off on that yet. No investors will buy off on it because it's not here. We can't point to it. You know, the only thing we can point to is across the street at the, uh, at, at, at the A-Lon at Castle Hills. And, uh, and that's just not a great, um, that's not a great comparable for us.
So I understand that there's not a comp here now, and there is in Alamo Heights. I'm not trying to pick on Alamo Heights, but just as a comparison. That doesn't mean, though, that you couldn't get those rents here. Alamo Heights is filling up those homes. You've just said what the benefit is of Castle Hills, one of the many benefits of Castle Hills. So it, it feels a little bit confusing to me to go Castle Hills is a great place. It's in the center of town. It's accessible. This is great. But we can't do as well as Alamo Heights can. And I, again, I understand that market comps may not be there. But if the assumption is that we, if from the very beginning that we can't do better, I think that's what I have a question about, because I don't see that we couldn't have luxury housing in Castle Hills that would be easily filled that would mirror what takes place in Alamo Heights where they don't need a seventy-five year tax break to get it done. So again, I kind of ask the question, why can Alamo Heights do it, but Castle Hills can't do it?
Well, I think there's a number, uh, uh, i- i- is where I, where I sit. Um, I think your retail is lagging behind Castle Hill or behind Alamo Heights, certainly. I think, um, and I'm not picking on any particular user in your, in your neighborhood. But in the center across the street from us, there's not the caliber of, of, of tenant that you would find in Castle Hills. I'm, I'm sorry, in, in Alamo Heights. Um, in, in retail follows residential. So I think by virtue of having this project in your, in your community, I think your retailers will benefit. I think you'll have a higher caliber of, uh, of, of, of tenant mix in the centers. Um, you won't have as many nail salons, for example. You won't have as many, uh, what I would consider a, a little, little lower, lower end retail than you, than you would have if you have four hundred and fifty or five hundred residents that have, you know, have a good living across the street. Your restaurants will do better, your, your, your retailers will do better, everybody will do better. It'll be a lift. So I think until you have that and you can demonstrate those kinds of, um, metrics, you're kind of stuck. And that's the opportunity. That's the opportunity and the, and the, um, and the challenge at the same time.
School district. School districts also sign, that plays a significant factor in it as well. Um, you know, Alamo Heights is generally regarded as the best public school, and San Antonio, one of the best in Texas. But anyways, I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you. So, thank you. I, I clearly don't have all the answers, but, but that's what I've seen over thirty-five years in the business is, is, is great retailers follow great residential.
Yeah, and it, and what leaves me confused with this is I agree with that. So wouldn't we like to have luxury housing in Castle Hills so that we would bring great retailers here instead of having affordable housing, quote, affordable housing in Castle Hills that may or may not bring the same kind of retail that luxury housing would?
Well, you know, the, 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 the great thing about this public facility corporation statute is, um, the, the, the aggregate rents for the smaller units that we're going to be providing are, um, uh, drive that kind of retail. I- 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 you, you're not having an affordable project here. You're getting a, you're getting a class A multifamily project, and you're allowing us to pioneer that by providing the tax abatement. Now, there may be, you know, a, a retail center um, along Northwest Military that, you know, might be raised to do class A multifamily after this. But this project, i- this, this structure has, has allowed people to go demonstrate and prove what a market can be. And then typically, other projects have followed this kind of structure. So, um, bro, i- i- it, uh, at Brooks, for example, um, people thought NRP was crazy for going in and building what they built, the Kennedy, I think it was called, when they built it. And they demonstrated there was a market there. And then other projects followed. So I, I personally think you all have a, an amazing opportunity to use us as a, um, you know, for us to partner in this together, for us to demonstrate what the market is. And then I think you all have a whole host of other things that you can do within this community that are transformational um, for, for your, your, your citizens. So, um, I don't view us as the last project that's going to be done here in Castle Hills. I view us as kind of the first project that's going to be done here. So maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to look at what you have here and see what you have and say, hey, we're, you know, we're in the, we're in the middle of the, one of the largest cities in the United States. Everybody in the United States seems to be moving to Texas or Florida. You know, this is a great calling card. And I truly believe that, or I wouldn't be standing here asking you guys to do anything. So I can tell you, I wouldn't, if, if I could do this as a, as a market rate transaction and not sit here and, and, and go through what we're going through, I'd have already done it. But I can't. And I suspect the other developers would probably do the same thing if they could. Um, but I, but I, again, I view this as the first project in Castle Hills to get done, not, the first and not the last.
Okay. You, you seem to be focusing on the affordability side. From an economic development perspective, the affordability side is really not what you should be focusing on. What you need to focus on is what's the maximum market rent they can get? Because that then drives the comparable for the next project. We had a project called Savio Sloughs. It was on Durango, still is on Durango. Um, project was twenty-five percent, very low income, fifty, uh, twenty-five percent at fifty percent, fifty percent market rate. First project on the south side of downtown. No comps whatsoever. They went in, it was successful. Their market rate comps then drove the rest of the development you see on the south side of downtown. And it is the establishment of that market rate comp that has the economic development benefit. Um, the affordable units, as you're calling them, and I got to say they're not that affordable. Um, those just drive the ability to do this transaction. But they will not be what matters at the end of the day in terms of setting comps for the next project in your community. That'll be the market side.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I use the word affordable because that's the word everybody sitting out here has used. So if we're going to change the conversation or the definitions of things, I think this is here again, the problem with why we need to be having a lot of conversation, because things seem to move each time we talk. My focus is on protecting the property values of Castle Hills. And I personally believe, whether it's right or wrong, that having luxury housing in Castle Hills is going to have a greater benefit to all the residents of Castle Hills than to have affordable housing in Castle Hills with the risk of knowing this is the first time this has been done. We have said before that we had, no one has ever gone through this process all the way before. We are being asked to be the, pardon me for using the expression, the labirat here of, let's experiment in Castle Hills and see if it happens. Yes, I, I believe there will be more to follow. And what I would like to see more to follow would be more luxury housing, not, oh, look, an affordable complex worked there, so let's bring more affordable there. We already have challenges with some of the multifamily and other housing that we have here, and that's why it's so important, I think, to have this discussion. And I appreciate everyone's comments on it. Thank you.
Counselor, Mr. Paul.
In the past, we touched briefly on when, how, and what use the PFC money can be used for the benefit of the city. Would you expand on that just a little bit? When can that, the, what are the control factors? What are these things that we need to talk in private? I don't know. What are the, uh, uh, trigger points? When can we use it? We have restrictions on how it can be used, or we set it up? I know we also have some state statute involved in PFCs.
We do. While the money is in the PFC, it can be used to support any other public facility. Now, that public facility could be housing, or it could be sidewalks, or it could be a park. If you choose to, you could transfer the money from the public facility corporation to the city. When it goes to the city, it is a general fund, and it may be used for any city purpose. So, um, simple example. You do this deal, you're going to collect a sum at closing, you're going to hopefully collect another sum, a large sum, five years from now. And let's just say that's six million dollars. So in six, in five years, you have a six million dollar amount of money. You could transfer that to the city. You could pay down your debt. You could build a fire station. Um, you can do whatever you wish to do.
Excuse me, pay down our debt of the city, nothing to do with the apartment?
Nothing to do with the apartment.
Okay, I, I, I was pretty sure of that. I just wanted to clarify that for anybody listening.
Yes, sir. You, you could do, it is city money. Um, and so you can do it with it, what the city chooses to do with it. Um, and it's, it's, it's a way to supplement the general fund of this city.
So we, we do have the option, just putting it in the general fund? Or we have the option if we want to build a new city hall, or whatever the case, because that would be a public facility?
It could be, or you could transfer it to the city and add it to other funds and just do a single project through the city, however you wish.
Okay, and, and that trigger can be pulled at the discretion of the board of directors?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Which would be city board of directors selected by city council at, uh, to run the corporation.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Counsel, do we have any more questions? And, and just to clarify, uh, go ahead, Mr. Gregory.
One thing that I am concerned about is we're establishing a precedent here. We're building a project, you all are building a project, we are living with a project. The stated purpose, primary purpose, it seems, is to bring a low-income housing, or whatever word, phrase you want to have it there, of fifty to sixty percent of the building is going to be workforce, whatever it is. We have very few lots in this city that can be wonderfully and adequately developed for luxury buildings. If I am not a developer, but I have been dealing with developers for forty years as a stockbroker, I would look to see what has come before I bring something to the place that I want to build something. We have a, there is a large piece of property that fronts on four ten. It would be ideal for a lot of things. But I would think if Castle Hills gets to have a reputation for what we'd rather build, low-income housing, however you want to phrase it, as opposed to quality luxury, true luxury from top to bottom of whomever occupies the building, you get what you want. You get what you go out for. If you go out for something that doesn't have a, a standard that you'd want us to have vis a vis other cities, you, you will get the lower standard, and you will never be able to shake that off this city. That's an imponderable, it's an intangible. What, uh, one thing that bothers me is this lure of the money to the city in the short run is going to try to dictate the long-term impact of this city for seventy-five years. I know there are people just salivating to get that six million dollars to build a park, to build a new fire, city hall, police department. They're just, they're just drooling at that money. That's the short-term benefit. But that's only five or ten years. You're going to live for another sixty-five years of the outcome of what we do today. And that seems to be just completely overlooked or pub-pupooded, or, well, we can't really look out that far, far. And that's true. You can't, heck, you can't, you can't get the weather forecast correct for next week. But we're trying to look out seventy-five years of a property tax exemption, and the things we do today are going to radically impact this city, and the reverberations are going to go out for a long time. Long outlet to everybody who lives here. The numbers on the sheet.
May I address that for a minute?
Sure.
What other buildings do you have in this city that look like that? Right. You're focused on this affordability concept, but that's the building you're getting. You are, we are, the structure is designed to let you build very high-quality luxury apartments. And not sure that the market would support luxury apartments here, otherwise, for now. But it lets you set the tone of what you're bringing to your community. And that is important. And I understand that the label affordable has been used. But the quality of the building is something that I'm not sure you can obtain otherwise, and it lets you take the step up to obtain true luxury housing. Next developer comes in here and asks you for a seventy-five-year tax exemption. And you say, no, been down that road, not doing it again. We have established these market rents. These are the market rents that we have. Build what you can build or don't build. You totally control what happens. Now, to Mr. Gregory's point, he is right in that you grant one of these, there's going to be another developer come to you. Because they're going to be like, okay, they did it once, let's see if they'll do it again. And they can't build something they want to build. And your answer has to be, no. We, we, we did this as an economic development project. We brought a high-end class A apartment project to our community. And that's what we want, and we're not giving up our taxes. We did it to set a rental standard. And you've got to meet the rental standard or go elsewhere. And that's the appropriate response, and the key to it is you have total control. You, as the council, will be making those decisions, not any developer. So that's the only response I can give you. I do understand the long-term aspects. I don't have answers for. If you are the guinea pig. If you are the guinea pigs, you are about fifth generation guinea pigs. We have been doing this, we have sold four or five of these, all of the sales have been successful, all of them have been completed within the five year window. All of them have been for greater than pro forma prices. Now, I do have to admit, we're in a great market, so that may be contributing to some of this. But um, this is not the first project. I've probably done fifteen or twenty of these. And I've probably been involved in the sale of at least five or six of them by now. And all of which have been successful. They have not changed after the sale. They've continued to operate in the same manner as Class A apartment projects. And the sales prices have been surprisingly low. So that, I mean, that that is the only thing I can tell you for the moment is I do believe that the program presents an opportunity. And I think it's imperative that we make sure that we do deliver very high end luxury apartment buildings. I think the program is designed to let you build something that you could not build in the normal market. And if you are convinced you can build this building on that lot in the next few years in this market, I'll tell you, you shouldn't do this deal. You should wait, collect your taxes. Now, it's ten years later, maybe that's not worth it. But right now, I think the market's not going to support it, not in this quality of building. So sorry, Mr. Gregory. I just didn't mean to interrupt you.
I appreciate that. Do you know who constructed this resolution twenty twenty-two zero one eleven that we're being asked to agree to tonight?
Likely, likely.
Well, here's some of the wording that seems to run against what you just said. And in the long run, I don't know whether this means anything or not, but whereas the city council finds that housing diversity supports economic investment. Now, I guess you're you're talking about apartment housing, when you're talking about housing diversity. Economic development and community development as well as improves the living economic conditions for persons of low and moderate income. Now, if we're, if we are definitely talking about luxury. This is, I think, a much more honest statement of what this is about in this is whereas you were trying to, you're trying to develop low and housing for low and moderate income people of at least fifty percent, if not up to sixty percent of the building that's being built. I think that is straightforward. I think that is honest. And I agree with that statement. I think that statement is absolutely correct. Then in section three, it says the P, the PCDP shall recognize the city's objectives. This isn't, you're now saying this is an objective of the city to increase housing diversity. Once again, I assume that's talking to apartments. Am I correct? So we're talking about apartment living, it bring in more apartments. And I I agree with that. And vitality, including providing quality housing, living in economic, uh, opportunity to mixed income populations. It seems to be a little social developing going on here as opposed to, as opposed to really developing the land. Or hopefully the end result is all luxury apartment buildings. You know, this can go either way. You can make arguments, and I think they're good arguments for either way. That this will be a big plus eventually. This building will be seen in the long run, maybe in ten or twenty or thirty years as a great place for a developer to come in and redevelop all the the apartments in there for substantially higher people who are willing to pay more income. I remember the towers building that was built over the rock pile when I was little. No one ever dreamed that it would make it because there was no place for any uh restaurants or places. And that has been a wild success ever since it was built. But it, this, this, you seem to be actually making an argument against luxury uh apartments. What happens if forty percent of the building is set aside for people who are paying market rate? Doesn't fill. Does the developer have the right to go to eighty percent below the median income for those also? Does the whole building have the right to drop to low income housing if you cannot fill for a substantial period of time at forty percent of the apartment apartments within the building with people who are willing to pay market rates? I assume they're paying market rates in that forty percent. There what?
So 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 to answer your question, yes, we could drop it to whatever rental rate we need to to pay the mortgage payment or to secure our investment, absolutely. But that is directly opposed to what Councilman Isbrand just said. If you can rent it for the highest rent you possibly could, then won't you? Of course you would. So you can't have it both ways. It's either going to be a complete failure. And we're going to rent it for as little as possible or as as much as we can, whether that's on the low end or the high end. But you're making a bet on the location and you're making a bet on San Antonio and you're making a bet on the entire market dynamics. So it's either going to be one way or the other. It's either going to be a massive success. Where you all may have left, I don't think there's any scenario where you would actually receive less with us as you would if it was a massive success. Or it's going to be a big failure. It's going to be one or the other.
Well, first of all, we, this is, this type of property has never gone through, this is but five or six years old, these PFCs. Hasn't gone through the cycle. We've never seen a down cycle of how it would affect the PFC building, never seen a down cycle yet. It's coming, always does. They haven't repealed recessions. You can have, it's not an either or.
It it is.
It is, you're going to get both. You're going to get a downturn, you're going to get a reaction of that downturn. And you're going to get an upturn and you're going to get a reaction to that. But if the reaction to the downturn is that you suddenly find the whole place dropping the apartment rates to because they have to, because it's not filling up and it's all below market and it's all low income. You, you, I don't know whether you're going to have a hard or easy time of raising the rates back up again, once you get out of the cycle. But you haven't repealed the economic cycle, so it's not an either or. You're going to get both.
But but one minute, if we built a market, a completely market rate deal, wouldn't I still have the ability to lower rents to whatever I needed to?
Sure you would, but you, if you had, if you're paying the property tax rate, I think you would try to have the maximum effort to always have it full as close to the maximum amount you could get.
But that's the same scenario here, because we economically benefit by having the maximum rents. So under either scenario, you realize twenty some odd million dollars in equity is going into this transaction. You don't get twenty million dollars in equity unless there are A believers. And then two, that group that's putting that capital in is ensuring that you're driving the best economic deal possible. And that's the case, whether it's market rate or it's this, under this structure.
Except your group is there to flip it. It's absolutely there, the group that wants the maximum amount. And I see nothing wrong with this, frankly. It's not there to see what happens in ten or fifteen years. They're there to, we expect this to happen in X number of years, a short period of time, and we're out of here.
We're we're there to do that, to maximize our profits. But the next guy is going to have double the bet that we have on it. He's going to have more incentive to keep the rents high and to keep, keep the standard there to achieve the best rents in the market. That's what we're all counting on. So I don't see a scenario where there is ever anybody who's going to come in and invest. I think when we sell it, though, it'll be a eighty-five million dollar sales price or something like that. I just, I've never even ever heard of anybody ever investing that kind of capital in a transaction to do worse.
Well, maybe my memory is faulty, it wouldn't be the first time, but it reminds me of when the people came in to redevelop the Wedgwood. We had a council member, I think it was a council member, stand before us to justify chopping up the apartments to make them smaller. To make it more feasibly economically.
Are you speaking about us?
No, no, no. I know you all had nothing to do with this. But uh, the seemed, the argument was being put forth that we have to have more apartments, so therefore we've got to chop up the large ones to bring in more people to get more rent. I see nothing that would preclude taking these two thousand and one, two thousand square foot apartments and chopping them up into four or five hundred square foot apartments. Which is a thousand dollars a month is not that un, not not so inexpensive or expensive. It determines how many adults are in the apartment paying the rent.
Sure.
So is there a limit of the number of adults that can be?
Yes.
There is.
Yes, so we, so we have leasing standards that um, that that adhere to the number of bedrooms. You can't stick a family of five into a one bedroom. And that just comes down to capitalism. We, there, there's no part of us us, I can't predict what will happen in the future. I can't predict what will happen if, you know, if a depression befalls this country. I I don't know. But currently, in in the thirty-five years I've been in the business, I've never seen anybody make an economic decision to go backwards, you know, in my business.
In your business, maybe you're correct, but it's very common in the world in which a good company will buy a bad one for the losses the bad company generates. Because that would be more generation.
I I I don't, I
Oh, that's, that's not uncommon.
Councilman, I, you know, that's a
But in your area, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's a degree I didn't get in school. But 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 I I I can, I can tell you, I I this is a, this is a, this is a this is a very opportunistic environment. We are very opportunistic. We are certainly doing this to make money. And I believe the next buyer will be doing this to make money. And the tax abatement that's afforded the next buyer and the following buyer and the following buyer creates a level of stability that is not available to market rate developers. That's why I love this structure so much, because it provides you may not make as much money. There are certain people, there are certain groups that want to pull the tax abatements off that they've gotten, because the market has outstretched it. I I believe that this provides maybe not as many highs, but it certainly doesn't provide as many lows. And that's my best crystal ball about this, and that's why I like it so much. So
That's a good, that's, I'm going to have to think about that point. That that point has, I think, some validity to it. I don't know. I have to give some thought about that. I'd like to ask a few more questions about this list that I don't understand.
I'm going to let Jim speak about.
Jim, Mr. In year eleven, we start with, under the individual structure gets four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars and increases therefore for the remaining period of time of sixty-four years. Uh, does, and of course, it's based on a a projection of an increase of one percent, property value growing one percent. And I know it's conservative and I appreciate that. But doesn't this figure total close to fifty million dollars?
Oh, it may total to that. Um, the net present value is about thirty-two million.
So approximately fifty million dollars of taxes that we would have if a building of the similar caliber was put on the lot. Uh, at least, according to these projects, at least fifty million dollars would be given would be paid by the owner of the building over the same seventy-five year period of time. Is that correct?
Uh, that could be. I don't actually have the total, but yes.
So I'm I'm just trying to figure out where this three times more profitable for the city comes in.
Because you don't get all of the money, that fifty million you're adding up, you get the next column over. You only get twenty percent of the total taxes paid.
Well, that is the column over.
Yep.
That's the column I'm talking about. That's the fifty million. That's what we get. That's not what all the property taxes are.
Okay, I know.
That fifty?
Maybe it is fifty million, that could be.
But we're seventy-five years.
If you then go over to the far right column, that number's got to be bigger than fifty million.
Yeah, what does that number of eighteen million on the top and seventeen million on the bottom represent?
The seventeen million on the bottom is just a final sale. The
What the city would get by, is a portion of the final sale.
Yes, sir.
And the top eighteen million represents what?
That's the net present value of all the numbers in that column discounted at five percent.
So it's really a question of fifty million versus eighteen million?
No, it's really a question of fifty million versus whatever that column adds up to.
Assuming it's sold one, two, three, four, five, six times.
The, yes, the net present value of your fifty million is six million. That's the number at the top. If you go to the far left, you'll see NPV. So we present valued that back. And that's the six million dollar number. And then the eighteen million is also a net present value number.
Of course, these number, these numbers on the left side of fifty million dollar numbers are not, do not take into account if they're uh five percent a year growth that you take that money and put in the bank at five percent.
Can I, can I approach you and remove that plan? I'm so tired of dodging around that.
Hey, it's good.
Thank you. No, it doesn't grow. And I started this conversation with saying that we didn't attempt to estimate the growth. That's why we did one percent. If you grow the number in the left hand column by five percent, then you would grow the number under, you see the nine million dollar number at the top?
Okay.
All right, that, make sure I'm looking at the right thing, yeah. That nine million dollar number is your annual rent. And so let's just assume for a moment that if we put a five percent growth rate on this, the city's collection of six million, let's just say it goes to twelve. Then your rent number of nine million would go to eighteen. Because your city tax rate is twenty-one percent of the total and your rental rate is twenty-five percent of the total. So whatever the taxes do, whether they go up or they go down, your rent moves in proportion of those taxes.
I really wish you had one economic cycle. Just one, because there are a lot of things that are being tossed around here. Yeah, you know, we're going to resell the building six times and we're going to get eighteen million dollars and we're going to do this, we're going to that. And nowhere in there does this have any economic cycle to it. And I just think that what we're, what we're doing, and I hope you all are wildly successful if it comes here. I really do, because it would be good for the city. But you're asking the city to place the bed of its entire future.
You do that every time you allow a building to be built.
But this is something, this is, nothing like this has come here in forty years.
I understand it.
And since cities moved north, it's inevitable that this was going to start now. Because it's just inevitable, this is the first, I think, other people are going to be looking.
So let's just assume for a moment that this is just a market rate project and it's paying a hundred percent taxes. So the things that y'all have discussed are you have an economic downturn, you have to lower rent. Doesn't matter whether you're paying taxes or not, you still got to lower your rent. Whether it's paying taxes or not paying taxes, it's the exact same risk to the city. You made a statement that when you lower your rent, you're going to take in lower income people. That's not necessarily true. It could be the same market rate people just paying a lower rent. The, the rent goes down because of economic situations, not because of the people you're bringing in or going, who are going out. They are going to maximize their rent because that maximizes their profit. And developers always want to maximize their profit. And so it, it does not matter whether you have a taxpaying entity or a tax-exempt entity. You're gonna have the exact same issues in either one.
Except, because we have a real life example that occurred here. A new owner or another owner of the Wedgwood came in and said, in order for it to be economically viable, we have to shrink the number. But then we have to enlarge the number.
Of small units.
So we, we start chopping it up so we can get what we want. That's far different from lowering the rent, and it also is another thing, because I just don't know, you know.
It, it would also be a violation of your lease, a default under the loan, and you would have a right to take the property away from them. They are going.
Now, there's another problem.
They're gonna sign a seventy-five year contract that says they're gonna run this building the way they designed it. And they can't change it without your permission. So they couldn't just go in and chop up the units um, without coming back to you.
Uh, but I've seen in Castle Hills in the twenty years that I've been sitting up here, somebody wants to come in and put in an office building or a business. And so we can't have all these parking spaces we don't need, therefore we don't wanna be, I know we need more than. Than what you are allowing us to, and they get a special exemption from the city and off they go. I've seen that several times.
It's still with the city's permission. They can't just do it.
Of course, the city, I'm not saying without it, you'd, you'd get it, but. I just feel this is a wolf among sheep. When the PFC is going to be run by members of a city council. And they're going to be told by developers who know the ins and outs of everything. What we have to do and what you have to pass and, and like bobbleheads will sit here and just agree with you and, and yes, go right ahead. When a lot of the time, we, we don't have enough information, or we don't understand it, or we misunderstand it. And, uh, but approve it anyway and see what happens. I just see this as a real gamble. That we're asked to put up a lot, and the a lot is our reputation. What our city wants to have come to our city, what we want to be known at, not just five years from now, ten years from now. But for a long time out. People who found this city were very careful. What they did. And they did it very slowly, how they transformed the city. And. This is a radical, this is a radical transformational situation, this is not a, some slow thing. It may work out very well, I don't know. But it's a. Low hanging fruit is awfully tempting for a lot of people.
Do you know why Alamo Heights has done so well? Because they have boutiques, they have shops, they have great restaurants, they have innovative concepts that people wanna, that, that are, people are attracted to.
And they own their own water system and they have the best high school system.
Regardless, but that's why people move to certain areas. I ate at a restaurant i- in, in one of your office buildings the other day. And it was the, the Thai restaurant, which by the way is fantastic. And I sat back and I, with an objective pair of eyes, I looked at all of the users across Northwest Military. Ticket brokers, nail salons. Retailers that aren't. The standard that is being. Discussed here, and that's the facts. I'm telling you all, that's what you have here. And it shouldn't be that way because you are wedged in the most, in one of the most significant. Tracks. Of land in our entire community. I would love to live here, you're, you have easy access to the Pearl, the Rim Airport, you have it all. But what you're missing is innovative concepts, places where people from Alamo Heights wanna come here to eat dinner. Not the other way around. That's what you're missing here, that's what we're trying to be a part of. It's really that simple, this may be a horrible risk as far as you're concerned, and maybe you're right, Mr. Gregory, I, I don't believe that, or I wouldn't be standing here. Doing what I'm doing. But you all have allowed. Concepts to skip over. How, how is this any worse? Than what's at the rim? How can this possibly be any worse than what's in Alamo Heights, how can this possibly be any worse than, than, than? It shouldn't be. You have a very, very unique. Geography here. And I, whether it's me, and maybe I'm the first guy that comes in and gets bludgeoned. And I don't get anything done. You ought to do it with somebody. Cause this. Is a bird's nest on the ground, this community, and I love it, and I think you all have a fantastic future. I think you all just have to choose to be innovative about it. And um, and. Speaking more bluntly than maybe I have in the past. But those are the facts. You have retailers and you have, you've been skipped over, and it shouldn't be that way, because this is, this is too valuable, this, I'm a real estate guy. The real estate's too valuable here, and everything else will be lifted. By what you all decide. So, anyway.
Mr. Plummer, I have a quick question. Uh, once we, if we were to go along with this setup PFC and somebody else decides that they wanna come in and do a PFC. In the city of Castle Hills. Do we have to show that they're not meeting a certain standard, or can we just carte blanche say no?
You just carte blanche say no.
Got you.
No, no standards whatsoever.
Mr. Esbran?
Have there been cases of that that you're aware of?
Where they've said no, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then there hasn't been any litigation, any attempts, anything like that to push back?
No, no, this is, somebody's asking you to partner. Y- y- you ask a partner to partner and they say no, there's nothing you can do about that, i- it's not a right. So, no, that, that's not a risk for you, you can simply say no.
Counsel, do we have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up we have.
Mayor, before we move on to the next item, um, I think I will work with um. Uh, Ms. Fernandez and Bracewell and Bakero on incorporating the, the public workshops into the timeline. Obviously, we had that on the screen earlier, and so we'll revise the schedule accordingly to incorporate. Um, the informational workshops that I know council has asked, um, hopefully in between the regular meeting next month and by the end of February.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on a proposed community development program, including a resolution providing for a plan under which citizens may comment on the proposed. Community development program and authorizing public hearings on the proposed community development program. Ms. Fernandez.
That's a mouthful, thank you. So Councilman Gregory raised the question of the resolution and how that balances with the proposal. I would say, what we're talking about is two separate and distinct pathways here, so the. A PFC sir is, is authorized under one statute and serves a very specific purpose and has some specific statutory guidelines around it. What we're doing with chapter two seventy-three in the community development program is a different statute. Um, and this is a, a pathway for the city to assert its authority over developing housing. So the PFC is not giving you that authority under state law, but the, um, chapter three seventy-three, the community development program does. But that chapter is about creating housing diversity, creating economic development opportunities, creating community development. And so the language that you're seeing in this resolution tracks the statutory authority, and that's why it's a little different. Than the private proposal is, we're, it's two different tracks. Does that, does that make sense, or am I creating more confusion?
It does, can I ask you a quick question, Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
We can proceed with the CDP.
Yes.
And not necessarily go with the PFC, correct?
Right, so, so I met with the, uh, with Councilman Joyce and with the chairs of. The Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee, uh, to talk about how this program would layer in with the. Planning process that they've already undertaken, LPA was on the call as well, um, and. It appears that, that outlining what's in the statute with the work that's already been done, that, that these are very similar. And there's already a commercial corridor along Military Highway that lacks housing diversity, there's some commercial. There's some single-family lots that are not transitioned well, um, and then you've got this corridor that's entirely commercial. Um, would be an opportunity for multifamily, i- it appears that this all is going to layer together very nicely. So if the council approves the draft that's attached to your resolution this evening, that would then go to your CPAC committee tomorrow. Um, and they would be prepared to take this draft and, and revise it and change it to match. Um, the work that they have done, and then that would go forward for additional public comment, they would sort of be the first step of public comment.
So, uh, what I wanted to ask is, this is the way I understand it, if I'm, I'm not understanding correctly, please tell me, but. By continuing with the community development program, we're effectively sending a signal. To the San Antonio community that we're interested in housing.
To the, to the, under state law, you're, you're saying that, that you would like to assert your authority to undertake housing projects.
And so I guess the point of that is, if things don't work out with Bakero, we've identified this swath of land that needs diversity. And we're effectively letting the community know, come to us and show us what opportunities. You're willing to present.
Right, and I think you're, you're fleshing out maybe a little more specifically the comprehensive plan. Uh, what I understand is they did not go into a lot of detail on Northwest Military because. It's zoned commercial and, um, and they intend to leave it commercial, but there wasn't. Uh, thi- this would give you the chance to layer on top of that, that housing diversity would be a good use of, of the land along that corridor. Um, and that you'd like to see economic development there, it doesn't require you, as Jim said, to partner in the future. Um, on a housing project or to create a PFC or to do anything else, but it would target this corridor for community and economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that the committee really did, with our consultant, think about. More dense housing in different areas in Castle Hills, including on Military Highway. Uh, you may recall one of the exhibits that Mr. Cabos presented here a couple of weeks ago, where he had showed some, I think it was three-story housing perhaps. Just envisioning what might happen in the lower ends of Northwest Military Highway. And so certainly the, uh, committee did envision a, a variety of housing. More diverse housing, and I think, I'm, I'm glad to see that this is considered a draft, because I look forward to visiting with the committee tomorrow. To refine this, to make it, as Ms. Fernandez said, really what we have in mind with the plan, so.
This draft is my effort to consolidate the statute, what, what the impact, the input I got from the committee, some of the comments that you've made. Um, you'll see there's, um, i- in the resolution, we've laid out in section five, some goals for the city, and that's probably something. That's, uh, that's worth your attention tonight to make sure that this is the direction that you wanna give to the committee. Um, is they're moving forward in reviewing the plan, but, um. This is, this is what we've laid out for the initial draft.
Mr. Gregory.
Three questions, section three, numbers two and four. We're promoting a more rational use of land. Why is that there?
This, these are the statutory guidelines. So if you're going to undertake a community development program, state law gives you certain, um, reasons that you would do that, certain. State guidelines, and this is the language from the statute.
So we couldn't pass this without that?
Well, you need to have some of it, um, and really, one of the things we talked about when I was on the call with the committee. Is, we're, Castle Hill certainly north of four-ten doesn't, doesn't really have. Instances of blight, doesn't really have instances of poverty or crime. But when you get up to the perimeter and you're in the San Antonio side, you are starting to see that. What you don't have is a buffer that, that would be a transition from lower income. Into your commercial, into your single family. Um, the, the buffer using a project like this. Not just serves as a, as a physical buffer, is a improvement on, um, the visual aspects you get of the. Uh, the landscaping and the lighting and the sidewalks and that feeling of completeness and of, of care, um, of attention, of vibrancy. But this, um, this new market rate that's being established, that, that y'all talked about in the previous item, now that extends out. That extends to your area, to your zip code, not just to Castle Hills specifically, the market doesn't know that geographic boundary. So now you see these areas that are just outside of Castle Hills, that maybe are not economically desirable today, getting the benefit. Of this project, starting to see that investment, so, uh, the transition has the ability to be. Transformational, not just transitional, but, but that's the kind of deliberate planning that this statute is seeking.
I would like to talk to you later about that, that's very interesting, that's. The, I'm going to say number four, creating transitional product, projects, improving the arrangement in residential and commercial centers, what is that?
That's, again, that's straight from the statute, um, but, but it is, it is a good application of this intersection, right? You've got a commercial intersection there, if you are not. Um, you, in this opportunity, for you're a partner, you're getting a lot more say in a project, so when, you know, we presented, what if the market just. Came and built an apartment complex, a- and it was a traditional market rate, it didn't need to come to the city for any favors or any. Um, special considerations, and so you don't have much say in the way this project is developed. Well, you also lose the ability to help direct, how does this project that's on a commercial corridor and is appropriate for that corridor. Interact with your rural residential district that you just adopted, that's adjacent, um, not a budding, but adjacent. You're, you lose that planning opportunity, so in this case, when you talk about residential and commercial centers, you've got. Really profound examples, you've got your major commercial thoroughfare. Adjacent to a really unique residential center, and the way those two are gonna interact needs to be thoughtfully done.
So that goes to section five, number seven.
Yes.
Addressing economic community development impacts. When would that be done? Because you, that's an extremely important point that you just made.
Yeah.
When would this be done? Talking about when to assess it, but by whom, and when, and what would be the impact of the assessment if it was positive or negative?
Well, so I think the way, how the city wants to layer. That analysis in would be part of the more detailed program. So at this point, you know, we've got the financial, the proposed financial impact of the PFC. Um, and whether you wanted to allocate that money under a community development plan to focus on the same types of goals. If you wanted to make it part of complete streets or part of, um, economic development along that corridor, or part of creating more transitions. Between the residential and commercial, you could, you could do all of that, you can also put the money in your general fund and use it for the purposes that you discussed earlier. Um, the way you're gonna, you're gonna achieve your economic and community impacts and the way you're going to assess it. These are all part of the planning process that's, you know, we haven't really done yet.
Basically, I really appreciate what you just said, thank you.
Mr. Esbran?
Um, a couple of questions, so. Based on this resolution and what I've heard here tonight, I think I'm trying to understand a little bit better. Is this specific to this project, and if this project doesn't go forward, this. Would be dissolved, something would happen with it, what, what happens?
There's, it's a good question, so the way I have drafted this resolution and the draft plan is that it addresses. It, it identifies as your geography for this program, the Northwest Military Corridor. it identifies as your geography for this program, the Northwest Military Corridor. So from 410 to the city limits. It's possible that the committee may want to shorten that or that, that you may want to shorten that tonight and make it pertinent to this intersection. I mean, it could, it can apply to any geography, but we have to identify the geography. If you don't choose to do, to undertake a specific project, there's no consequence to that. This is kind of outlining some goals and objectives, and the city then has the authority to undertake actions to achieve those goals and objectives, but you don't have a requirement to do that.
So to make sure I understood, I heard it correctly. So adopting this, which would be to, for a proposed community development program, this would be specific to the Northwest Military area.
Right.
So everyone on the south side of Castle Hills, where we already have blight and problems, will have no benefit whatsoever from the adoption of a community development program. Is that what you said?
So you could spread it, you could layer it over the whole city. It would, it would make more sense to me that if you wanted to do something on the south side of the city, that that would probably be its own community development plan, because these would be different plans. I don't know if you would, if you would use a PFC as your solution to economic development, community development issues in the southern part of the city. You may have different solutions, and so you may want a more specific, different program for that. And you can have as many programs as you want.
And, and maybe I'm splitting hairs in my mind because it says program, you said plan. I think about what our committee and Councilman Joyce's efforts have been involved with. And I believe those represent the whole city, not just one area of the city. So I'm very confused now of how these piece parts fit together.
The comprehensive plan covers the whole city. The community development program, the statute sometimes refers to having a plan. It is a program, it's, the statute is inconsistent in its use of language. And so the resolution uses plan sometimes because it's following the statutory language.
Right.
But, but the program is typically limited to a smaller geography than an entire city.
But the difference is that this is a legal document in effect versus the comprehensive plan, which is a wish list from our community.
Sure. Yeah. This is a, it's a resolution stating the city's intentions.
So, so I guess, Mayor, that, that then helps me to understand the question you were asking about, does this then send a message to the public as, at large that we're open to all these ideas? And I, it's, I guess I'm, I'm caught up on the fact that we're, we're now being, I've been, I've supported trying to move this forward so we continue to have discussions. This document, though, says we're only going to deal with Northwest Military, the heck with the south side, the heck with everyone else, that this is customized specifically for this one request. And I didn't have that impression until tonight. I thought going through this exercise was part of opening the doors for us to continue to have conversation and to explore this. So we would adopt something tonight that would be very specific to this one project. And we have not yet even let the public have any say or engagement in this process. It seems like this rushes this along pretty quickly here.
The community development program requires, requires a public hearing. And then there's a reference in the statute to hearings plural. So we've, we planned on two public hearings on this program. If it's the city's desire to stay on the general timeline that it's set with the developer, then those, those hearings need to be scheduled and happen. So we've targeted two dates, the 18th and the 31st for these hearings. Those would be separate from the town hall meetings on the project because this is really dealing with the community and economic development program for this sector. If you, if you want to do something different, then we have to provide you different notices. And it, this would be pushed further out. So it would be something to consider with the developer.
Yeah. And this is, I had a discussion with Mr. Plummer about this and specifically requested that he take to the developer my ask that we have town hall meetings, one or two, specifically to allow the public to weigh in. My expectation was that that would take place before we would be voting on anything that begins to lock us into, here we're customizing this for this one project. I'm also terribly concerned that according to this proposal, we have decided to hold these public hearings in the height of the Omicron spread that's taking place in our community. And we have a very vulnerable population. And I really would encourage us to think about the, the steps that were taken. We have not let the public have a say, have a participation in a workshop, town hall meeting, whatever you want to call it. We're now saying that if we do that, if we do that, it would probably be attached to this, which is proposed to take place to both meetings in January, which would probably be the most unhealthy time to ask our residents to come sit in a hall here and listen to this proposal.
I think the city manager's request was that the meetings be separate, that the public hearings for the community development be on the scheduled dates and that we do the town hall meetings in February on the project. But that can be adjusted at the council's will, but that was, that was kind of the mindset of where we were headed.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate what you're attempting to do here, and I understand the timing and everything. But I guess what I'm struggling with is the public really hasn't been engaged in this. But we're being asked to continue to take actions, not just to get more information, but now to sort of start proceeding down the path here, which is what this resolution would do. And it feels cart before the horse to me. It's like, we don't even know if we want to do this. We've been, I think we have been told up to this point that, well, these are steps that can be taken and you, we can later say no to it, but we may not even want to take this step. How do we know until we've heard from our community about it? So I, and so it's problematic to me to see a document here that talks about a community development program that is only for one specific project. It's not about community development. It's about a apartment complex development. And to propose public hearings on this process in the middle of the, and the greatest health risk that we have to our community right now. So I, I really think that this deserves to be looked at more holistically and to think, to remember that our first obligation is to the well-being of our, our community and exposing, potentially exposing or asking them to be exposed to health concerns because we adopted this document tonight, I don't think is a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the motion.
Okay. Mr. Schnell.
One more question, though, before we have the motion. This doesn't lock us, again, this doesn't lock us in. We do this. We can withdraw, we can do a resolution to remove it, we can do all the different things.
But it, it would send the program as drafted to your citizen committee tomorrow. They've got a meeting scheduled and they are prepared to take this. And it would, that would result in LPA issuing a work authorization for their review of this and for their help with exhibits and incorporating the planning concepts that they, that they're working on. The developer would assume the expenses for that work authorization, not the city. So, so those two things would be triggered and then we would also be scheduling those public hearings.
It'd be triggering for the next steps.
For the next steps, no final steps.
Again, nothing is final. The reason I'm saying, you know, I understand Mr. Isbrand's concern, and I think he's, he's right on as far as, you know, the concerns and, and the implications. And if we do this, does that mean it's, it's a done deal and these type of things? And how can it be construed? And so that's why I'm trying to be clear, clear on it, because I realize we have to go through certain processes, even to get to the next drum and keep going up and keep moving. And to me, any actions that we take is to allow us to move to the next information decision to try to get there. And Mr. Plummer has something to tell me about.
You could direct that the, that the final community development program does not come back to the council before these town hall meetings have occurred. That could be part of the direction of this motion.
I think I would be, although I have great hesitation about supporting this because I think we have an obligation to look at community development across our city, not just on one lot. I would continue to support moving this forward because I think these discussions are really, really valuable. But the only way I could see supporting this is either if we strike the January dates and set a, set April, sorry, let me get my answer, set February dates so we can get past the current health situation that we're in. I don't know if that's of, of any appeal to the, to the council. I, I do believe it's valuable to have these discussions, but I believe it's imperative that the public be allowed to engage in this too, and that they not be put in a position to jeopardize their well-being in order to participate, potentially jeopardize their well-being.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Joyce.
I think it makes a lot of sense for this development plan to cover the whole city. And the committee has been thinking about housing across the whole city anyway. So for us, I don't think it's a big deal. It may impact the images that LPA is providing. So a little bit more time, pushing the time back may make sense from that standpoint as well. So.
Mr. Mayor.
I just have a comment about how easy this would be to fix. In Section Five, if you were to substitute a little V, V and V1 to not have a restriction to geography, wouldn't that fix and meet the needs of Councilman Isbrand?
I think it would be a global change to eliminate the Northwest Military Corridor to cover the city of Castle Hills. So it would change in the resolution as well as in the draft program.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Fernandez, that being said, it was my understanding that Mr. Breimer's company was going to potentially reimburse the city for the expense of LPA, and I imagine that would potentially increase their scope, having to look at it entirely?
I honestly, I mean, when we talked about the exhibits that we were asking LPA to begin thinking of, we, the, the first exhibit requires a demonstration of income and blight citywide anyways. So that would have been a citywide exhibit. And then the second one lays out the geography of the program. So that would become a city map instead of a unique exhibit. So I, I, I don't foresee that that changes LPA's scope significantly.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure we weren't using Mr. Breimer's checkbook too liberally. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, can I interject? I would just like to still say that we, I would like to still have the 18th meeting, special meeting, because I know council members had requested our financial advisors to be there to discuss and give an opinion on the project. And then also another agenda item in discussion of the continuance of issuing debt moving forward on street and drainage infrastructure. So just to let you know.
We can still have that meeting and provide a virtual option for people to remote in, ask questions from the safety of their home, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Is, is that the case? I thought the governor's order regarding the ability to do that had lifted.
And Mr. Mr. Schnell will correct me, but I think it's only as it pertains to having a quorum, people can still participate. Is that right?
Citizens can't participate through Zoom as long as everyone in the room can see and hear them, and they can see and hear everybody else. So the testimony can be given by Zoom.
Okay.
But the council and a quorum of the council needs to be in the room.
Well, and I think that could be very problematic a week from now, too.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm saying I think that could potentially be problematic, too. That we're going to be asked to come back again in another week, not knowing what conditions will be like. And I'd like to think things are going to get better, but not necessarily so. And I don't see an urgency to, and I appreciate, Mr. Rappley, what you're attempting to do, and it has been at the request of the council. But I, I don't see, this is a bolt-on of let's do some other things while we're here, too. Because again, these are, this is intended to include two public hearings. I have asked for town hall meetings, whether the council or the, the developer wants to agree to those, it's certainly up to them. But there's several more opportunities that we would have. I think part of the solution to this way, and I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your, your suggestions about Section Five, and I think it's worthy of consideration of whether this needs to be brought back to us in its entirety based on what you said. But at the very least, I think Section Two could be modified. That there would be, the hearings, where the public hearings would take place at dates to be scheduled in February and subject to evaluation and rescheduling based on community health conditions at that time. Again, I don't know if this is the will of the council, but I, I do think we have an obligation here to try to consider. We're now talking about potentially up to four kinds of meetings or gatherings, maybe they're but together, but still we're asking the public to participate at a very awkward time.
Well, maybe we don't have to define those dates right now. Maybe we can come up with a motion that suggests that we approve the draft Resolution 2021-01 based on the concept that it will include the whole city, not just Northwest Military Highway. And further consideration of this will be put off to a future date based on the suggestions by the city manager based on health conditions at the time.
I mean, if, if, if it can be word, your motion can be worded that way, Mr. Joyce. I think you've done, will have done an excellent job of addressing some concerns here.
Surely you're not asking me to repeat that. Okay. Ms. Tedford, did you get that?
I, I think you can incorporate Mr. Isbrand's comments into the second part of your motion, Mr. Joyce. Where you've provided to Castle Hills and then Mr. Isbrand's language on future dates regarding health conditions.
How do you make that determination?
And that's what I was going to just say. Would it be possible for us to utilize Bear County slash San Antonio's threat level? I think right now it's severe, and hopefully if we can get below severe, that's enough of a identifier for us to move forward with the safety of the community input.
And I'll, I'll just go with our financial advisors because I know they had a number of meetings scheduled. And so I had locked them in, but I will look for alternative dates as well.
And I, I apologize for that, Mr. Rappley. I think I'm as anxious as the rest of the council to hear from them. And I appreciate the work that you've done to try to schedule them. Unfortunately, when that scheduling was taking place, we didn't know the circumstances that we would be in today.
And, and so right now I just verified, we're at a level severe and the level below that would be moderate. So I would hope that if we get to a moderate level, we get to the point where we can have public hearings and openly welcome the community to come in. Mr. Schnell.
Ms. Fernandez doesn't know I'm doing this, so I'm just going to do it and see whether it works. In, in Section Two, if I understood Mr. Isbrand correctly, the language would change at the end where it says the, the CPAC or alternatively the city's planning consultant is hereby requested to present a revised proposed community development program, PCDP. And then it would say for all of the city, not just for the Northwest, Northwest Military, for all of the city at a public hearing, or I think it would say at public hearings on dates to be determined in February, based upon community health conditions, based upon the city of San Antonio matrix of a community threat level. That sound right, Mr. Isbrand?
Yes, sir, it does. Does that, Mr. Schnell, then require us to make any similar adjustments to Section Five where you strike Northwest Military and put in City?
That's next. I'm sorry. So in, in number five, it would, it would be, subpart one would remain the same. Subpart two would say compatibility between projects requiring appropriate, so, so we would take out the phrase NW Military Corridor. So, so we would take out the phrase NW Military Corridor projects and the adjacent rural residential district, both distinct and important areas, and it would just say projects between the projects, requiring planning, et cetera. And then in subparts three, five, and six, we would change Northwest Military Corridor to city. And I will provide this to the city secretary in the morning, if, is that, if there's action on.
And similarly in the draft plan, that's Exhibit A.
We'd make comparable changes.
So if, if Ms. Tedford captured that, that was remarkably what my motion was going to be, Mr. Schnell, thank you.
I think, I think that's the world's largest motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second, Mr. May. Do we have any more discussion?
Who's getting dinner?
Ms. Tedford, could you?
We're voting on the motion with the amendment or?
We, we have Mr. Schnell to give us.
Mr. Gregory, no motion was made until Mr. Isbrand made a motion a moment ago and Mr. May seconded. And the motion is taking the resolution, which in the agenda packet is numbered 2022-01-11, resolution 2022-01-11. And taking that language as presented to the council before the meeting and making changes to sections two and five. The change in section two essentially is to say that the CPAC or the city's planning consultant will deal with the revised proposed community development program for all of the city and that there'll be public hearings on dates to be determined in February with reference to the city of San Antonio matrix of community threat level under the, for the COVID illness. And then in section five, there, there are changes in subparts two, three, five, and six. The change in section two, section two is to just talk about compatibility between projects, taking out the reference to the Northwest Military Corridor, Corridor and the adjacent rural residential district, because we, we're now going to have this be for the whole city. And then in, in the other subparts where Northwest Military Corridor appears, the word city would be in, in, in its place.
Thank you.
That's what you're, that's what Mr. Isbrand's motion and Mr. May seconded, as I heard them.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Next up, we have announcements on mayor and council members on items of community interest, Mr. Isbrand.
Just a, a, a quick observation with the start of the new year and new resolutions of thinking about doing things. We have a wonderful Castle Hills community organization that supports a, supports mirrored events in this city. It's the time of year to renew dues, twenty, a modest $25 a year supports an incredible amount of activities in this community. And I would encourage everyone to support our Castle Hills community organization with their membership.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
I just wanted to reemphasize that the historical society will be gearing up again. And Mrs. Crawford in the back is also one of the members of the historical society. And part of our work, I think, is going to be informational and helpful for the master plan as well as the proposal that we are considering here. The history of Castle Hills is filled with twists and turns. It is not all roses. And I hope to present the full picture of a progressive society. And I look forward to continuing our work in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Just a quick note, the Castle Hills Business Association is planning its next mixer for all, including businesses in mid-February. And we'll have more announcements on that, more details as time goes on. But please think about mid-February, we'll be having a speaker from Northeast ISD workforce to help businesses think about how they can develop their businesses using workforce folks. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Just as an observation for the council, the Fed has now made it pretty clear they're about to start raising rates in March. They may raise them four times during the year. That will mean if, if we're going to borrow money, it's going to cost a lot more money if we keep dragging our feet. Time is very short now. And just please keep that in mind when we're looking to raise more money.
Okay, and I just want to wish everybody a prosperous 2022 as we're off. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second, Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Okay, it's eight forty-six, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.